Okay folks, I'm gonna call the Town Council Budget Workshop on February 24th.
A season before.
First up is Emergency Management Public Welfare, pages, uh, looks like thirty-two. Ron McDonald, Director.
This is really a tough budget every year.
Yeah, it hasn't changed since I started.
It should be easy.
The fuck is, uh...
Any, any, uh, questions on page thirty-one? And your, your, your base pay is, you offset that at least half by a grant?
Yeah, you have PG grant, fifty percent.
In case anyone needed to know that. Next page, thirty-two, expenses. Revenues, anything yet?
Uh, code red, still works the same way, if somebody wants to go online, they go to the police website? Or do you have your own website?
Oh, the link is on the Emergency Management website, so you just fill out all the information there.
Do they allow you up to five minutes?
Uh, last time it was three, but it might be multiple now. You can email, cell phone, home phone, everything else too.
Alright, nothing there, I think, um, the next is public welfare, but, uh, that's not in the GROV, right?
No.
Can I ask a question? When I visited, uh, the Alzheimer's Association, they had a meeting with public officials. And, um, they said that you could register people who have Alzheimer's, or, you know, like, if that's your problem, you could register them somehow.
Uh, it's probably the special needs registry, is that what they were talking about?
Well, it was that you can do fingerprinting, um, you can give them a, a GIS thing?
That might be something the police do. We have the Brian Special Needs Registry, which is an online thing, it's only a disaster. We can look up anybody that has any special needs in the community, um, that's what we use. But that might, fingerprinting and stuff, that might be something that the police...
Well, I didn't, I was just amazed that they could have put the little GIS thing, so if they get lost...
They can track them down.
And that's really wonderful, I don't know which...
Where do they put the GIS, you know?
They get, I don't know.
Oh.
You can put them in their shoe. They're gonna be in their shoe.
Guys, I have the shoes on, you're good.
Yeah, that's right. But I mean, at least, at least to even have that is just a good thing, you know? I didn't know which department, whether it was the police department or the police...
Kevin, if they have those medical alert and those type of things, you can, well, you can track people for that, can't you?
Uh, I know they have a lifeline, they, it's like the lifeline thing, GPS pendants now, where if you fall, or, alert, it's GPS now, you don't have to be hooked in your house, you can drop them, follow them, they can find you.
Oh, that's good, okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, see you next year.
Next up, welfare, page thirty-two.
Yes, uh, this is long been, uh, contentious with me. It is a town office, and one of the people think it should be eliminated. Some token amount should be plugged in there, uh, it would be a hundred dollars, a shoot fifty, or whatever. I know there's one woman in town that has spoken, uh, to me that's interested in being the Director of Public Welfare, but, yeah, we're gonna have a town office, uh, until it's eliminated, I think we should plug at least a token amount in it.
But if there's nothing really for them to do, then it should be eliminated.
Well, if you follow what they really do, is they, they're supposed to be a resource person and, uh, coordinate, uh, an ideal public welfare director, as you read the thing, it says coordinate food banks, clothing drives, holiday basket distribution. The director acts as a representative for disadvantaged residents and provides information on assistance programs provided by other agencies. And it's whatever somebody chooses to do with that office, but what would happen is that, uh, you would work with some of the groups, uh, in town, and keep in contact, and, uh, you know, be a resource. I mean, we have, uh, a town side, which is required, they put up legal notices, and in theory, they help maintain order at meetings, but it's still, it's required to direct a public welfare with an officer of the town of Hopkinton, and it, and it's, we get somebody to take that position, and I know there was at least one person interested, uh, that, uh, that I know of, that it would give them some money for gas and stuff like that. So I think you, we should at least put a token amount in there.
Is it by ordinance, probably?
It's in the charter.
Oh, it's in the charter, oh, okay, alright.
What are you representing, fifty bucks?
I mean...
We should put ten dollars in there, I mean, it's default, it's unnecessary, with all, with the way that the healthcare industry works now, between the Johnny Cake Center and the warm shelter, sometimes community action, or now tri-state community action.
Tri-state.
It's un, it's unnecessary, it's just unnecessary, and that's why I will never get anyone to run, uh, for the office.
You, you're getting nobody to run because there's political activity, uh, which will be rectified.
Well, but if, if there's nobody voting, they're not providing a service, and no one is complaining, that they're working in service number one.
It's an appointed position.
It's an elected position.
Oh, it's elected, right, oh, okay.
And the other thing is that I'm sure Lisa's office is probably filling in the gap.
We don't, we rarely get any home calls, um, because there are a lot of agency information on the website.
I would, uh, I would, uh, presently suggest a hundred fifty, I support a hundred fifty. The office is entitled to summon somebody back until it's eliminated, it's an officer of the town of Hopkinton. All these other agencies are not an officer, and you gotta remember, there's a lot of these agencies that overlap between agencies too. And, uh, a good public welfare director would know the agency, they would, uh, you know, take time to sit down with people and tell them of all of their options, uh...
I think the last time we had someone in the position, I believe it was a write-in, because no one was running that.
I think it was Jen Bedard.
I think it was a write-in, and then they quit.
The last person was...
Jen Bedard, wasn't it?
No, she did not do anything, so, she did not make the, uh, so she got money for Julianne's thing.
She didn't, I don't think she got paid, did she?
She did, she was entitled to the amount.
I don't think there was any, was any money made, uh, with the...
There was money, it was about half one. The last one was elected to office, she declined the position.
I know, right, Harry.
And then Tom Sargent has moved to, uh, Tom, he is free now.
Well, I know that could be, pardon me, we needed to resign, and I need to resign.
Whether this budget is, is, we're gonna be submitting budget, whether we, we're gonna, even if it was the current budget, no matter whether it's thousands of dollars, or fifty dollars, or ten dollars, I think that it's irresponsible to put money in where you know it's not, it's not going anywhere, so.
Would it be possible, if there is a candidate for that position, that town also could authorize a certain amount?
From his current conditions, if somebody came up?
If somebody came up?
Yeah.
Do, do you guys don't know if something's gonna go high or not? I know there was one that's been effective in April, but it's, we just won't... That was, if, if, money is obviously tight in this budget, and I think since you have a little bit in the contingency, you could authorize, that might be an option, that would be an option.
I would, I'm aware, I still, I, for years, said I would vote for it, for that in my room, but it's because when it was put in, we needed it, we needed it, but we don't need it now, we have churches, we have food pantries, we have warm shelter, and we support warm shelter, and Johnny Cake, we give them money, and we hear with Sunita Vajini, um, we take care of Wood River Health, which takes care of it, and they have, um, help for people. It's not something that we do because that person is not useful, when it's just as easy to go to people who really do know what they're doing, and they have counselors behind them, and so it's a position that I think has run its course.
Well, again, to Scott's point, before you got here, if it is in the charter, okay, so, again, a hundred and fifty bucks is not gonna kill us.
But no, we continue to use it.
No, no, I'm just saying, if we have somebody come forward that's interested in being on the Ason, then we can take it up then. I, I, you know, I think that's the way to leave it, because I, I respect Scott's point of view on it, you know, it's, and every time, and it's a very small amount.
Right, but it's also, if the town pays someone, and they have no counseling training, and they have no training on opiates, or no training on food, or pantries, or whatever, and somebody doesn't get what they need to get, you're, you know, that's how I'm saying, I have someone in town, you need to tell me what I need to...
You get that, the point, the point of the matter is, the Director of Public Welfare is not a professional one for it.
I know you're, I know you're...
I'm not gonna vote for it.
Well, we have a consensus, so...
Yeah, we're not consensus, we're not gonna vote for it.
It's not a professional position.
But what about if somebody comes forward?
Just different.
And then we can decide it.
Sure. More supplies, maybe more stipend, maybe...
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking more gas money, but whatever.
Whatever.
Yeah, okay, alright, thank you. Uh, next up is education, um, not much there.
Yeah, I mean, we discussed it.
Did you have the number in?
Yeah, we have the number in there, and we'll, we'll continue to update it as we go, but there's nothing to talk about till after that meeting.
Yeah, which is tomorrow.
Their meeting is tomorrow.
Yep, we'll just keep our fingers crossed, send emails, whatever, the next thing they can do.
By the way, just so everybody knows, we're looking at for the general budget, twenty million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, well, twenty million, two thirty-nine, and four hundred and seventeen dollars, so we're looking at twenty million dollars now.
And you have to pay fifteen odd millions for that.
Well, let's see, that is, just take, just take page, pardon.
Yes, just over, about around fifteen, yeah, fifty, or, yeah, closest fifteen millions are responsible.
The only thing I would add is that the increase is nine oh one, five fifty-two, so nine hundred one thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars on the expense side. And currently... I was just gonna say, currently, to our, over, our increase in tax legging is eight thirty-two, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars, so, you know, we've actually been able to eliminate the impact of all the contractual obligations in our budget, any, um, departmental increases. So, we've actually even reduced the impact of the school budget, so our increase in tax legging is actually less than the impact of just the school, or I remember lower.
Yeah.
You always gotta remember, the school budget, they have means to, 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 so, even if we get under the cap, it's still in there permanently. So people should have oversight of that.
So they're having meetings tomorrow, and they've got on the agenda, um, the budget, but, that's right, I'm not sure if I can go, but I'll certainly send some emails to my friends, they'll love to hear from me, I'm sure, but, uh, anyway, to be continued. Next up, Chief Palmer, pages, uh, twenty-four to twenty-six, please. Okay. Any questions on, um, page twenty-four?
How do you, uh, Chief, how do we compare our municipal police officers compared to other similar towns?
Well, whereas the lower end, smaller departments, obviously, usually are at the lower end. It's come, come up over the last few years, but it's still at the lower end.
It's all contractual, we, we look, we analyze that, you know, every Wednesday, Sunday, when we negotiate, you know, we, our last negotiation took, I think, almost a year of back and forth, so that's the main thing we look at, is comparing salaries at the same position, same tenure, with other municipalities our size, and, so that's looked at very closely whenever we go through negotiations every three years.
Yeah, well, we had a finance board years ago, and I was on it, we usually looked at similar towns, I think it was like seven towns, I can't remember if you've ever had a finance board quite a while, uh, but that's how we came up with, even police cars, we had replaced two a year, this is the thinking year to go, and then we would look at different, uh, things, departments in, however, the smaller towns, like similar to Hopkinton.
Yeah, we did ten-town, so, salary serving.
Let's say it's comparable with Richmond.
Yeah, that's, now you've seen West Greenwich, and, and, situating, Worcester, or...
Correct.
Chief, is the, I can't remember, I think, um, I think it's, uh, correct, is the clerk, union position, police clerk?
I'm sorry?
Is the police clerk union position?
No, he's not.
Oh, it's not, okay, that was what Sherry was, right?
She was union, but we hired the new secretary, she is not.
Oh, okay.
What is that?
Uh, I think we all sat down and chose that, that route, thought a better route.
Okay, anything else on page twenty-four? Page twenty-five, compensation salary, it's up there, yes, about that.
Um, I have a question on forty-sixty patrol overtime, can you just explain the raise? Can you explain the raise in patrol overtime, that's, um, forty-sixty?
Okay, I think this was proposed last year, um, there's a lot of things that went into it, one of them was that we were assigning an officer down at F D A, um, there's other things that go into that as well, we've had an officer that left in September, which obviously causes overtime, we've had some surgeries, and some long holidays, and some personnel issues.
And then I have another question.
And then I have another question, on forty-one thirty pension, the three oh nine, five sixty-three is going up to three seven seven, three seven seven, what is the, and I know that's determined by the state, what is the state, um, percentage?
I don't think Brian would know that.
Yeah, it's, it went from twenty-nine point four seven, the MARS contribution, to thirty-two point one eight.
What was the first figure, Brian?
Uh, twenty-nine point four seven, to thirty-two point one eight. That's the town's contribution...
To municipal employees, right?
For, uh, the police.
Does the, uh, state, is it a blanket thing for the whole state, or is it by town?
No, it's individual by town.
Oh, good.
They, they calculate, you know, they have actuaries that, you know, look at the pension, and do all the analysis, and they, they try to make sure that we're at a certain funded level, so it fluctuates based on that.
What is our funding level?
Pretty good.
Yeah, we are good, we were, I, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head for this year, but, um, but we are, we've, we've, since I've started, we've been, not because of me, but since I first started looking at it, it's been, we've always been healthy, in a really healthy spot, on the municipal side and on the police side.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on top section, compensation salary, okay, anything in the services section? Anything in building and operations? I guess did we, uh, get that second half of the roof fixed?
Yeah.
Oh, we did that, okay, that's fine with that. That was, that was all the gold, right, the gold tint, right? First one was a little cheaper than the second.
Hopefully this, this will last a whole long time.
Yeah, that's cool.
How's the septic system? How often does the alarm go off, or is it not going off anymore?
It's not that often, I, I just check regularly, so we have a...
Yeah, it's usually toy secure, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, and we have, uh, a, 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 technology comes out there and checks it regularly, as does D P W.
So the alarm is not going off so often anymore?
No, we haven't had too many problems with it.
And it's, it's probably high water table, or...
Well, I think a lot of it is, if, if one of the valves gets stopped, it continues to run, and then you gotta recognize that, and, uh, there's a lot of...
So you're not having to have them come out for a third time?
No, we haven't...
Not often anymore?
No, we haven't had that in a...
In a while?
No.
Okay, okay.
Okay, anything on the motor fuels, it's pretty straightforward, uh, vehicle and a fire extinguisher? Page twenty-six, supplies and vehicle maintenance?
Yeah, and Chief, what is the la, average rate of time of, uh, police uniform, as far as, uh, before it has to be replaced?
Well, that obviously depends on the, uh, the police officer, uh, they, they last, uh, a while, they're, they're made of good, uh, material, so they, they last a little bit longer than the average, but they're wearing them every day, so you get into a tussle, and sometimes they, uh, they get rid, and so they go, you replace, that's usually, uh, the shelf life is that they end up getting into a tussle or something. They start to fade, especially white, you know, the ones more inserted, like the, the blue.
So the uniform replacement, obviously, can be shirts, pants?
Make me gloves, it can be hats, it's anything that, that's on your, your body that needs replacing, and they get a six hundred dollar stipend, so it's on them to make sure that their equipment is up to par, so if I happen to see somebody with some leather that needs replacing, I'll make sure that they need to get that done, they have that stipend, so they can go there, purchase that, and bring back the C plus, and we'll approve it, and you max out at six hundred dollars.
Best part?
A year?
Six hundred a year, yes, when you first come on, I'm sorry.
That's boots, uniform, everything?
Correct, uh, when you first come on, there's in the contract exactly what you get, let's say, two pairs of winter pants, pairs of summer pants, and so on, all the way down, after that, it's a six hundred dollars that you have to maintain or alter. If you are, if you do get into a way, some type of tussle, like it's on the department, to be able to replace that, so...
Oh, so that doesn't, that doesn't fall on the officer?
No.
Right.
That would be like running a situation, chasing someone?
Right.
Yeah, they do. It happens.
Well, they, they get it pretty good about it, there's a little bit of a custom like that, the Gordon's, they all, they all stipend.
Okay, uh, the police department revenues, any questions there? Is there, is there a reason why the budgets are, in the past have been, in the fifties, and now we're budgeting at a hundred?
Because they, they're doing three forty-five, don't they?
Yeah, what are they doing now?
I mean, I mean, are you like, are you helping the state with the, with their, um, construction, you know, their construction sites?
Right, the revenues mostly are from, from officers working details, we get a, uh, a certain amount per hour for the vehicle, the use of vehicle, and then we have, uh, a certain amount for admin costs, and so that creates some revenue. The, the detail itself to the officers is paid by the vendor.
Okay, has any of the solar projects required you to get money for that?
I don't recall, if there are, there are very few, maybe they, they might have needed a day or two where they had to get in and out of, uh, um, any certain location, they might have by your officer, but they're, that's not, that's not the multiple.
Or like National Grid, when they were putting out the big, you know, on the roads?
Right, National Grid.
The road, rich, you know, even to talk to them and things.
Tree trimming's kind of a big one, yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm thinking of tree trimming. Is it, is it possible to raise that to a hundred and fifty thousand?
A hundred and fifty would, would be too high, in my opinion.
What are your thoughts, around a hundred all the time?
Yeah, but you gotta remember that it's a passer, you gotta look at the line that says net detail revenue, so that acts, because we only keep the admin fee, um, so there's an expense side of that, so we pay, we pay it off payroll, and then we also pay, um, we, we only collect an admin fee and, um, some revenue, what is it, admin fee and something else we collect? There's like two fees that we collect.
Like inclusion?
Yeah, but we basically are just a middleman, like, we, we pay the police through payroll for detail shifts, and then we collect the money from National Grid, or, or whoever the vendor is.
Or Cardi, right?
Yeah, we only keep a small portion of it.
Right, can we add anything to it?
What are your thoughts?
On the revenue line?
I mean, I, I thought a forty-five thousand was a big jump, um, and there was a couple items, when we discussed in the department meeting, that were keeping them out there quite a bit, um, and I, I can't remember off the top of my head, I thought maybe it was tree trimming and something else that was keeping a lot of detail in the town of Hopkinton.
And that might go away?
That, yeah, that weren't gonna be continuing on in the future, so we, we thought it was kind of an anomaly the last year, um, the other thing was, um, isn't there, and I'll, I'll revert to the chief on this, it also depends on manning, so if there's not overtime shifts to be picked up, they'll pick up detail, right? So if we're, so when we're short in a guy, which we have been, um, this year, they're not gonna pick up as much detail because they're gonna pick up the OT shifts, is that correct?
Well, that's correct, but we, we have traffic officers that are not police officers, that go out there that are not eligible for working patrol, so that's what we hope, when, when a officer doesn't put in for the detail, we want them out there because they're making, uh, was it twenty-five dollars an hour on the car? There's, we have these traffic officers that go out there, and they just train, and they go out there, and, so they act as a, uh, well, as a traffic, traffic officer, but it's in lieu of a police officer, so they're collecting the same revenue for the, the town, so that's why we have the...
But it's paid in a different rate, right?
No, it's the same rate for the police, for the police vehicles and the admin, so it's beneficial for the town to keep those out there, that's why we have so many detail cars right now, because when it, when it's high, we had six or seven cars out there at one time, well, that's very beneficial for the town.
Okay, that's contraption.
Why wouldn't it, why would you have all police officers, why, why would somebody only wanna be a traffic?
Well, many of...
Or is that the beginning?
Well, many of whom are, um, have other jobs, well, you would get a couple that are fire, uh, firemen, so that they are first responders, there's certain criterias to be a traffic officer, um...
And some of them are retired?
Correct, correct, we have...
Retired police officers from Hopkinton.
Right, we have, uh, side of life, we have out there, we have, uh...
Georgette, I've seen that time, two times.
We have a less fully police officer that doesn't have to, uh, make the way as well, so, um, they, they're not eligible to go, some of these are not eligible to go out there in patrol, but they can work in traffic, because obviously, they're not doing the same function. But they get the same pay, so it's, it's better, that's what we...
So if you have someone that meets a criteria, and they happen to be a fireman, what do they wear? What do they...
They have, we have, they have to go by their own traffic, their shirts, and so it says traffic on the back of it, um, they have a, um, be used, they have a hat, they have to wear all the same type of gear, it's just gonna say traffic on the back, it's not gonna say police. It's ten percent of the total.
Oh, what are your thoughts, Brian, about?
I, I think we could probably move it up a little bit, but I think one fifty's way too high, I, I mean, I would say twenty, uh, I mean, Chief, do you have any input, I, I think, based on actuals, um...
You're looking at net, or?
I'm looking at net, yeah, you gotta look at the net, because that's basically after, I would think, you know, one twenty, we could do comfortably. Um, if we really wanted to push, I, I just get nervous on over forecasting revenue, because if it doesn't come to fruition, you know, then we're playing, we're in the hole.
And, and you're looking at which line, uh, detail or general?
The detail.
Detail.
Detail, to one twenty?
Yeah.
One twenty.
We had a very good year last year, but, uh, you never know when the, uh, when the details kinda fall off because of them completing the projects.
Would it, would it be a fair assumption that maybe the details would go down with a lot of the solar going down?
No, because I don't think the solar was the main, it was the patrol, I would say it was when, where'd they do a big road job to, um, I don't, I don't know, I don't always get time, I'm trying...
They had several, uh, down Main Street in the...
Yeah, it was like a bridge, yeah.
Uh, they've had several that went one...
They did a rebel bridge on there, I don't know, right?
Correct, that was...
That was mine.
Yeah, so, you know, no, no one may come, come along, you had, they repaved, uh, Woodville Road, that was, that was...
That was huge, true.
Very big, so...
And you know it's a state road, you can still have local, please.
Right, exactly. I've spoken to one of the officers, I've got a lot of them, but I asked him what, what's coming, I know Verizon has a bunch of poles that they have to fix, and so that's, it's, it's, it's a decent size, but it's not as big, uh... but it's not as big as some of the DOT wants it to be.
All right, that sounds good. Next up is dispatch, page 27. Full staff there, chief, right?
Yes.
All right. No questions on 27, 28? Compensation is enough?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I was able to do that, the pensions, that pension is bigger, and the uniform cleaning, cell phone is bigger. 41, 30, and 52.
I could address those. So the quick explanation is MERS is all contractual. It comes from the state, and they're just like all the other town employees, they're in the MERS pension. So their rate went from 3.46 to 3.73. And then the salaries, because we're going back two years, contractually, they had salary increases over the last two years that weren't in the budget, so that rate's applied to the higher wages, so it's gonna go up. Even if the rate stayed the same, it would go up, just based on the higher wages. The cell phone stipend and the cleaning allowance is also contractual. We negotiate that. We kind of really came to a standstill at the end of negotiations, where they wanted higher, if I remember correctly, it was shift pay. And this was something that we negotiated in lieu of more shift pay. It was, and it kind of, it was kind of a win-win, because the stipend is something that they get when you borrow stocks, you don't pay taxes, but we were paid more had we gone with shipping. So we opted to go with a higher stipend. So it's a cell phone 400 and the cleaning allowance is 300, and that's per employee.
Oh, okay.
You lost me. Why are we talking about stipends for dispatch? Why is it on cell phones and uniform cleaning?
White jacket, 42.
No, it's not.
54, 22. There was a, you see that? Was it 100, did it jump up? Okay. Anything under supplies and uniform maintenance? Okay, that's it.
Are you budgeting the 1,500 because it's real?
Yeah, again, that's part, that was a part of the new contract. But it wasn't in the last budget, because it would have banned, had it, if the budget didn't get rejected. But because it wasn't, we weren't able to fix the budget, find items for the new contract. But that is all contractual.
So it's less than the police stuff, right?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Like 400 bucks.
The, the one line item that the chief and I spent a little time discussing is overtime. And, you know, I, I know that we're not trying to.
This is on dispatcher, I guess.
On dispatch, yeah, I mean, I know, and I don't wanna that, have a mirror too much, but I, I think we're a little bit light on overtime. Just, it just seems to be, one day after another, there was a foot injury, there was a baby, there was another employee that was out in F and L.A. So you can see that the overtime, we keep overrunning on overtime, or at least last year. And the part-time wages are also an impact of that, because we fill it with part-time dispatchers. I don't think it's much, but I think a couple grand would go a long way. I think if we brought it, the number, I calculated, and this is just, if you take the employees, times their wage, hourly wage, times their vacation hours that they're allocated, plus an average of six vacation days, it gets us to like 29. So even if it was like 28, I think we'd be a lot better off.
Oh, yeah, 29,000.
29.
You can't try 27. I mean, the year before was 28. But the year before that was 24, so.
Right, but you gotta realize that that's three years of paying increases. So I'm, I'm just saying that they're gonna take their vacation time, so I know that that's the minimum, right? Every time someone takes a vacation day, someone's getting paid overtime for that shift.
So how about 28?
I think, yeah, I think that would go a lot farther than 25. I just don't make 20, I'm not trying to increase.
No, no, no. You're talking about reality.
Yeah, I think, I think 25 realistically, if.
Not enough.
It's not enough, yeah.
All right, so we'll do 28. That's overtime 4067 for dispatch on page 28.
And I, I got it, and I did kind of oversee it or overlook that. So we spent a little more time on it, going over it, and it does make sense.
Well, the reality of the numbers seems a bit more, it's a little more, so unfortunately.
So if, would it be, you're paying overtime versus hiring another person to kind of, you know?
Well, you wouldn't be able to do that. Every, every shift right now is covered. There's, there's four officers that work, or dispatches work 40 hours. Then we have a fifth one, which is called the permanent part-time, that works that last shift, the 25th shift. And, and you hire somebody else, he'd have to be per diem, because he's only filling in when somebody calls out sick or somebody's on vacation. And we can't guarantee when they're gonna work, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's on dispatch, I guess. CIP. CIP is, let's see, police department and vehicle replacement, we got 37,869. That's probably a lease from a fire here and one new car.
Yep.
What is the new car plan to be? The new car, is it gonna be an SUV or?
Unfortunately, we can't go with the Dodge Chargers anymore. All the sedans are, no one's making police packages anymore with sedans. So we gotten, the last two were Dodge Chargers, and they'll be cheaper, because they're not SUVs. So we had to go with an SUV, there's, there's no choice. And we kind of searched out there.
And what SUVs do you go with? Is it Ford?
Ford, right, and probably the great cars, number one, but number two is the SUVs that we have in our detail. We, they're more interchangeable as far as if you need a park, we cannibalize one of the new cars. We also are able to cut down a little bit on the, on the package to, like the gun mile and the computer mile, because there's similar type vehicles that we can move one into the other one, so we can save a little bit of the package of trying to equip them.
What was the, what was the model?
It's a Ford Explorer. They call it a Ford Interceptor here, but it's basically a, it's the police package of the Explorers.
So they're not doing the sedans anymore, but like the Ford, what, it looks like, it looks like a Taurus.
It was, it was, yeah, they called those the Interceptors as well, but they were basically Taurus. They're not doing, they haven't been doing those for two years, and now they're not doing the Dodge Chargers. So if they're doing them, they're like three years out, so.
Have we, any two cars?
One. At least for one, and a second installment on the north. Any else, chief? Okay, chief?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief, can we get a Ford LTV or a Ford car as a franchise?
You're gaining yourself now. That's what I drove when I first came out.
Our plans for control, how's that fresh?
The fresh.
Yeah, the one that bit you and the one that wouldn't go on its own.
Oh, they're home now. They're, they're gone for me.
Oh, good.
We work close to them.
So how long have you been in the job now?
A year.
You've spent a year?
Yeah.
Just a year?
Yeah.
I've heard some really nice things too. I've had people say, help them, you've been very nice. She's so nice, and she just picked this up. She even helped me with the deer. She even picked up the deer.
Thank you. I do, I definitely do. If it's in the road, I'll definitely get it out of the way.
Do you live in town or?
I live in Richmond.
Oh, okay. All right, so you used your rural.
Yes, yeah.
Had some really nice compliments.
Thank you.
Just a quick question on page 29. Isn't there, like, last time I visited, there was an assistant. Where were they?
The part-time wages.
That's what they said the other day. But anyway, no, when I toured the facility with my work there at one time, we were at the shredding day. It was very clean and smelled nice, because oftentimes, they don't smell nice, and they're not clean. So thank you for that.
No problem.
What about that dog, did he ever get?
We placed him. He just got homed in February, beginning of February. He's doing really well.
The barker?
Yeah, yeah. It's quiet over there.
He wouldn't stop. He was cute, but.
He's an awesome dog, he just, he definitely has those hound qualities.
Oh, yeah.
Well, there's a ton of it all over the place around there. It's hard for them to keep quiet.
A bird flew by, it started. We had rabbits, we had rabbits that had a litter in like the front guarding area, and he would go into that corner, and he would not come out, like he would want to be out there. He'd bark and howl and, oh, yeah. He was a little.
Just fairly young, what, a couple years old maybe?
Yeah, he was about three, yep. And he, he turned around once. We have volunteers that come in, and they take the dogs for walks down the trailhead that's right behind the shelter there, and it, that was the best thing that could have ever happened for him. He'd go and go do his smelling, and then he'd come back and be exhausted, and he'd just.
So before we get into your budget, I wonder if there's anything you wanna let folks know? You got anybody there to adopt now, cats, dogs?
I have a one-year-old pit bull. His name is Jack.
The one that was still there?
Yeah.
The one you can put your finger in?
Door bargain with him. The best thing that we're doing right now to get him to be comfortable when the door opens, because he does himself no justice, but once you get to know him, he is the greatest dog in the neighborhood. He is just so sweet. He just wants to sit on your lap and snuggle with you and be comfy. But he's very protective of that space. So right now, we're doing, whenever somebody new comes in, or even myself, or my part-timer Haley, whenever we walk in, we give him a treat as soon as we walk in, and then we just walk right out. So he learns that when the door opens, it means good things, and it's working, so it's progress.
I'll have to remember that next time.
Yeah, I'll make sure.
Bring your treat.
We've got a bucket right outside the door, do the little name tag for him to grab one, we'll give it to him.
I'm doing, I'm surprised normally, just, he was not.
No, he hasn't seen it, but he's, he really is sweet.
I'll give him the benefit of the doubt.
You got anybody else?
No, that's it right now.
Did you end up getting enough of the dog yet?
No.
No, you just kind of thinking about it?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a big decision.
Springs around the corner, we're gonna get crazy. That spring is, yeah, that spring is outrageous. It's crazy. We had black cats.
A lot of cats.
Yeah.
There's a lot of cats. All right, I start for page 29, okay. Page 30, compensation salary.
I assume the pension is contractual again?
Yeah.
Big bump in part-time wages, huh, Brian?
Yeah, we added on a part-time employee, and that important, because we need someone there seven days a week. And the wages, because my state law, because there's Sunday, she works Sunday, so it's only a half-day, I believe, but state law, it's half and a half, so.
Anything else for compensation salary? Supplies, maintenance, and operations? Okay.
Yeah.
You ready?
Electricity, heating, fuel, but at the same time, that's what it is.
Yeah, they weren't on before.
Yeah, exactly, that's what it was.
We had the, we had the shelves shut.
Closed in all of them.
All right, so let's just say it's open. Anything under animal control revenue? Is that just, is that donations? Is that donation?
It's a combination of, yeah, it's.
You think that.
You had a good run rate anyway, 3,800.
You think 1,500, 2021 is a good number?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Because fiscal year 2021 budget, for revenue being controlled at 1,500, year-to-date, called 21, it's 3,810, so that's more than.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to look into that, 3,800, to be honest, before we weigh the pre-sick. Because that, that seems high.
It sure does, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, she's been doing a great job.
She's a lot more proactive than the prior.
Sure, but e- even that, you say, yeah, she's been doing a great job, but it's.
When Bill smiles.
Well, he and I know.
She just loves good parties.
And the chief.
But I, that does sound high.
Yeah, well, if you don't mind, I'd like to just kind of look into what that 3,800 is. If it's real, we can certainly up it, and I'm sure there's probably maybe a little bit of room there, but I don't think it's gonna, that looks suspicious to me, because even before, when we had full time, I don't remember it being.
Again, consider the source, right?
Right.
Maybe real prior, so. One time, I was about back, getting a sun.
Really?
How, this is your first time going through this process, it wasn't easy?
And it wasn't her, by the way.
It's interesting. It's interesting. It is the first time for me.
You can underscore it.
I just have a question. Are there any volunteer positions open right now there?
Not at this moment, but there's going to be.
Do you have a list of people that you have to contact? Because I know someone that Steve Wheel was asking last year about it. At that point, we were fairly new in the position, but he is, he has an interest in, he has two rescue dogs of his own right now. I know he volunteers, so let's see if there's a volunteer position here.
You know, I'll definitely reach out. Right now, we have the two, and they work really well together. And with me, they kind of like go back and forth with you over who shows up on what day, and who does what with the animal. They're, I honestly am so thankful for them. They're a huge asset. But one will be leaving, she's gonna have a baby soon, so when that happens, she won't be so available, so that'll be.
She won't be.
Yeah, she thinks that she's gonna be able to run the world, I'm gonna tell you. She's awesome, but she's definitely gonna need that time with her baby, so.
I was just asking, any contact?
Yeah, please. Yeah, I'll give this information and call them in the time coming.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. Oh, there's a snow lady.
Thank you very much.
She's up to good work.
Thanks, I'll remember this.
Next up, my friend Mary. Pages 36 through 39.
So how many years now, Mary? I'd like to ask you that. This is our hired part-time in 1997. 23, going on 23?
Wow.
Yeah, still standing.
How's it going? Pretty busy? Is starting to get busy, or?
It's, it's busy, no, but it's busy all the time, especially since you started with the after-school camp. You know, so we're open till 5:30 every day, so.
The kids are.
Right now, we have basketball running every day for a week, not even, so that'll end in a few weeks, so.
And you just.
End on that. Yeah, you know, it's like one day at a time, four feet at a time, or one day at a time, depending on the week. It's, it's good work. We've got a good year, so we're making it work. I know the times aren't easy for all of us and budget, but we're doing okay.
Any questions on page 36, folks?
No, I was kidding Mary earlier about the fact in her budget, just joking, because I was actually reading a lot.
She's one of the few departments that produces a lot of revenue, so.
Trying.
You like Mary.
Succeeding.
Yes, I think so.
It's very popular, absolutely. It is a, it is a great spot, a very great spot for talent.
Yeah, thanks. It's a fantastic facility. We're lucky.
Yeah, thanks. It's a fantastic facility. We're lucky to have Crandall and Mount Hill Valley. The Langburn is just, is gonna be amazing.
Yeah, pretty soon.
You have a plan for Langby as far as when the school uses it, and when we use it, who's in charge of when they use it?
Yeah.
Kind of get it worked out?
So, that's always a little funny, because they, you don't charge them, and they don't do any maintenance for us, but to be continued. We'll see.
The only thing is, I just joined.
Maybe we can charge them three hundred dollars. We need about three hundred dollars.
Three hundred.
For the introduction budget, all.
So, I would like to, because it's off the subject, but they meet their, they meet on aging, but, you know, developing programs for like the senior population, you know, I just joined the senior center in Richmond, where I haven't been to any of the things, and I go to the meals on the Westy Senior Center. But I would like to see us somehow, if we could, because the senior population that uses that is very small. But maybe more outreach to the senior population, if that's possible.
Yeah, I mean, we have, it's a steady group. Certain times of the year, we have more, like for our tricks and our special luncheons and things, but we have a steady group that comes two to three times a week. We do the tai chi, we'll either go out to lunch, take out lunch, kind of do thing though, so Thursdays are there all day. We don't have a lot of success with this, you know, we tried to do some like social type programs, like enrollment and tax, but we get like a ten o'clock appointment, a one-thirty appointment, and then like a four o'clock appointment, and the workers are there from, you know, and they're like, you know, Westerly is just such a huge center in Charleston.
So, what we do is based on needs?
That's what we do. Like, you know what, they want to do this, they don't want to do that, we kind of shift the number in the round, hopefully it works, and.
But I think too, with small towns, because Richmond's a small town, and Hockington is, and Charleston, you said, you have one in Richmond, Charleston, and Westerly, not, I'm not sure we need another senior center.
Center, yeah.
We don't, we just don't have the number of people. And many of them, because of Hill Valley, go to Richmond.
And everybody, and they're, you know, for lack of a better term, they're set in their ways too. Like, they want to meet a certain group on this day, and do this on that day. I don't tell them what to do.
It's got to be that, you don't.
I'm not their boss.
They probably appreciate them.
Yeah.
Any questions on the top portion of page thirty-seven, compensation salary? Services, anything there?
No, I like seeing that there's an increase in adult activity programs, though, that, you know, because I know you needed a bus, and, you know, to do different social events and things like that.
Yes, they are, we increased that, which is having, Zumba started to be, we introduced Zumba a couple of years ago. That's become a little more popular, and then adding, or trying to add a beginner's tai chi, because it's not a regular tai chi group, it's now becoming advanced for the children, so we're trying to figure that out. So, we did add, you know, five hundred bucks to that line item.
So, Mary, when you have those classes, so you get instructors and whoever, like lives or whatever, and then you pay them whatever they tell you, like how does, how does the pay scale get established?
Well, that's a good question. Like, our yoga teacher is, she's an international trainer, and we're very fortunate.
So, she commands a higher pay?
But she doesn't charge us a higher pay. She happens to be on the rec commission, she was qualified, she's just a really good person like that, so. Sometimes we take, you know, like the Zumba instructor will come in and say, you know, I need to make so much, you know, a session. Other times, like the art teacher, they will get anywhere from seventy to eighty, to eighty percent of the revenue that we bring in, which tops out usually like ten kids per class. She does it every six weeks, she supplies all the materials. So, we have, you know, really good instructors more, because we wouldn't be able to afford it. You know, some people come in, and they're like, you know, like charged sixty-five dollars an hour, and, you know, they're sure they're worth their services, but, you know, go, okay, well, I'll get back to you. So far, so good.
I was gonna ask, top section of compensation. It was, it was, the contract services, that's lower than actual, I think. So, fifty-five hundred has been lower than the actual, so why are we keeping that?
There's a big portion of it, it's merchant fees, and we've re, we got a new pension. Yeah, so we got lower rates.
Oh, so we actually negotiated something?
No, we made a negotiation, we shopped around. We were using, because we had a merchant account with Bank of America, and then they use software called Community Pass to, to charge all the residents that are, are taking in programs. And to use credit cards and those type of things, there was a fee being charged per credit card, and it was higher than we, you know, so we shopped around and found a better.
We also started charging a dollar transaction, you know, how to get that transaction, so you can buy something online. So, I'm trying to, it's not a ton of money, but it's a little more.
It all sets, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything on the supplies, maintenance, and operations?
So, we increased the supply seventy-seven hundred, fifty-four hundred. I don't know if you remember two years ago, but we decided to eliminate the T-ball line, because we didn't think it had dropped so much participation, so we took, we took the expense line from T-ball, added it to regular programs, so that's what we'll take T-ball out of, and we did likewise for the revenue, for that matching line.
So, no T-ball?
No, have T-ball, but we're just, I mean, there was a time when we had like eighteen teams, now we're down, yeah, this was way back. I mean, it might climb up again in the next few years, but now like sixteen, so that's not really to like have a T-ball line. It's just growing with the regular programs, you know.
Oh, we have, we have more babies born.
Well, that is very, we're seeing.
It's a process. So, I have, we have one in my neighborhood due next week, and then another one coming within months.
Deborah, we're trying to, so we have a toddler, we have two toddler programs, so we figured we'd start trying to get families involved earlier. A very low-cost, forty-five minute, twice a week, get music, and then we have like a little crafts and reading thing, so. Try to reel them in earlier. And write in T-ball and so on and so forth, so. So, what's funny is, I think there's so one that, kids who play, you know, kids who are in their thirties, well, you know, adults have their kids back now. And then, you know, like a couple of the commission members are now grandfathers. Higher, I think, they'll help tie me back in the day. It's like, whoa.
It's a little circle, huh?
Yeah, a lot of people are still sticking around.
All right, anything on the revenue, any questions there? Page thirty-eight. Playground program modifications, playground revenue.
Playground's really kind of nice, he hasn't been there. Right, so it's gonna go up. So, what we are going to do this year is, it's timed at the increase, so we're gonna increase the tuition for summer camp fifteen percent, and we're going to increase the hourly, the after-school tuition up to twenty-five percent. And we feel it's fair, we're shopped around and looking at other programs, so that's gonna make a significant, you know, increase in the overall. But we're on target now, like this says twenty-nine six, but we're more like forty, because I know mine enters December, you know, those numbers, so. So, between that, I think we're on target with eighty-six. So, that's great.
And winter basketball?
Yeah, that hasn't really been, because that starts, I mean, it started a little bit in November and December with open gyms and all of that kind of stuff, but those numbers are rolling in now, really, so, or I would feel comfortable keeping it at twenty, maybe next year. We're, we are seeing a slight drop in some of these more athletic programs, but, I mean, we did get to eighteen, just over eighteen last year, and we're still collecting right now, so.
Anything on the T-ball instructional?
Yeah, so that, that we've, we've done it to, yeah, into the general.
Page thirty-nine, camp festival and special events.
So, we do a lot of collections in the spring. We have, well, we have all the spring things coming up. We have the soccer, the volleyball, field hockey, and then we start collecting for the Hoop Academy, which really bumps that way up, and today now, we start getting revenue for that.
Hoop Academy?
The Hoop Academy.
Hoop basketball.
That's what you call it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the Hoop Academy, and it's been twenty, twenty-one years to that outfit. They're great. And we employ a lot of the Charro Ho kids as, you know, counselors and that.
Are we doing, are we doing all this volleyball?
Well, yeah, volleyball, yes. So, we'll have about four major tournaments. We're also gonna host, partnered with Newport Volleyball Club, we're gonna host a fundraiser for the Tomorrow Fund. I mean, we won't have revenue from that, but it's just a nice event that goes on. That would be first weekend in June, I think, first weekend in June. So, we'll have four youth tournaments slash parent-child tournaments, where we set up about twelve to fifteen nets at Crandall, and.
I hope we can do it outside.
Yep, yep. So, this will be, I think, our fourth year doing that, so, yeah, yeah, it's really fun.
Anything else on the camp festival special events?
I want to add too, that, you know, the revenue for camp special events is, you know, we do okay, we do good, we do well, but a lot of, some of the expenses that come out are, are expenses that aren't producing revenue, really, like the holiday stroll, the hop arts, you know, police detail, you have to, and musicians for certain events. You know, we're not charging the community to come to Crandall and participate in holiday stroll, so I would just like to bring that point out.
Has anybody heard a complaint about the rep partner in the last ten years?
I have.
Good, you personally. But no, we haven't.
Yeah, except for the playground, but we're keeping our fingers crossed, that we're gonna receive that grant next month, I think, is when maybe came out.
Because that's really gonna be necessary.
If we don't get it.
The program is doing so much, it really needs the work. And then the, yeah, we'll be hired to help with that. She's doing really well.
Oh, Amy, yeah, she's fantastic. So, she does, she actually does hands-on with toddlers. Like, on Thursday, she does toddler playgroup. She goes and has lunch with the seniors. We both kind of just take our, we're trying to be seniors, and then she runs bingo for them, so. She's like toddlers, seniors, she's fantastic, and she's a jay-ride old trade. And then I just wanted to point out too, that grants that we, you know, applied for and received, total ten thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars this past year. So, you know, which is, goes towards improvements and pick-the-tables and new floors and this, whatever else I can think of. So, that will keep rolling in, hopefully, if the governor, you know, the state wants to let us keep making those funds available to us, so.
Anything else?
No, it's really good that you have things ready to go when grants pop up too, so that's great.
Yeah, there's one right now, actually, I think I had a talk bill about, it's Rhode Island Foundation is now offering ten thousand dollar grants. I don't know if you remember, the pavilions built with that, what pavilion, but we're gonna need to address some issues at the activity center, with windows and other, so. But they, they send you the application with only like a couple of weeks' notice. I'm like, do they really want you to apply? So, you're trying to.
Is that, is that, I'm thinking of a church.
Oh, the R-?
Can a church apply for that kind of thing?
Oh, like a nonprofit? So, we do, we, we had, I guess, as a municipality, because we've received money in the past.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm wearing a different hat.
Oh.
I'm the church secretary, but it doesn't speak Baptist church, so I'm just thinking.
Oh.
Can we get?
I bet you you could. So, this one is like, it's a grant to create open spaces or programs, create spaces to bring the community together. So, like, I'm gonna go with the whole toddler, the seniors, because they're using the same space, and, you know, more we can make it attractive and accessible, then, but hopefully I can get it done in time.
Do you know, when is it due, and was?
Like, March thirteenth or something. And I just, I just thought I could email it Friday, yeah, after then.
It's, okay, so I could go on the Rhode Island Foundation website and find it, maybe?
Yes, and then we'd be competing.
Oh, okay, so wait, wait, wait. No, no, no.
Maybe not. Well, I don't think so.
Is it only, is it, okay, so like another, this is Westerly, so, are you, are you, would you be competing with Westerly?
I don't know if I'm. Everybody that applies to that is competing.
We're all competing. Everybody's competing for around foundation, or all red foundations.
Oh, all right.
So, do it, though.
Why not?
Sure.
They're all like, because they have a good cause, right?
They've got a lot of money.
Me too.
They give a lot away.
Me too.
All right, thank you.
We are gonna get you much well.
Thanks, Mary. Thanks for the crap that my mom took.
But if you get it and we don't, you gotta.
Then what do I have to do with that?
Just don't tell us.
Kickback. I'm just kidding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Bill, pages forty-one or forty-two. Any questions, forty-one? Page forty-two, compensation salary, anyone there? All right, supplies, maintenance, and operations, any questions there?
Yep.
You're not gonna tell us where the pad is, Bill?
The secretary went on maternity, right?
Yeah, last Friday, she had a baby girl.
Oh, very nice.
She had a baby girl Friday.
Oh, she went right up to it.
Worked it.
Oh, she had a C-section.
Her last day was Wednesday.
Yeah, and she had the baby Friday.
She ran for a C-section on Friday.
Wow, all right. She's a true first one?
First one.
Oh, good, good for her.
So, she'll be off for three months.
Did she, did she have a boy or a girl? Boy or a girl?
Girl, girl.
A girl?
Baby girl.
Baby girl, yeah.
Very good.
Three months, you gotta.
I think you need some typing. Wanna help Bill out with the typing? All right, that's it for that. Okay, finance, debt service, C I P, anything there?
Uh, no, 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 for me there, there's no C I P stuff.
We just, what's that, C I P for some of the departments that are on the agenda? That has C I Ps covered for the open meetings.
Yeah, what's that, though?
In other words, when we put down C I P on the agenda, the reason we do that, even though we don't have to go over the C I P, is that if the police department comes in that has a C I P, we're able to discuss it for the open meetings.
I'm still gonna build budget here, and there's no revenue.
No, it isn't. He's strictly in expense.
But I had a question about that, why was?
Well, actually, I mean, it's not dissecting, you know, we don't have a human resource person, contract negotiations, all that kind of stuff.
It does everything.
Yeah, so. Purchasing officer? Purchasing officer.
Locating.
Bits, bags. Even rides.
Yeah, even rides.
Even rides when they're necessary.
All right, anything else, Brian, Bill?
Yeah, I just, I did hand out the information of what the other towns are paying their, the town council members. I didn't know if you wanted to discuss that or not.
Well, is that, I don't know if we can right now.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, so can you put it on the agenda for next one?
Yeah, I wonder if it falls on the other budgetary matters, could you think we could discuss it under that, guys?
Warren Island's other, other departments, agencies.
I'd, I would put it on another agenda, because people might want to have something to say, because people have strong opinions about what the town council are running out to.
So, as, as is, there's no change. So as, as is, there's no change, when we went over this department, we didn't have any changes, just, I think we, some people would take a little change, but...
Yeah, they don't want to do...
I think...
I was gonna joke about that one night in the draft, but I, I didn't seem to appreciate it, like I didn't put draft as a primitive, I'm just...
What is that, though?
That's a joke.
I'm all going to Calm.
Never mind.
So the next one is, next, uh, the next one is the market, right? What day will we do that?
Thursday.
Thursday.
And then I think the next week, we have one, what, on the end, or something?
I don't, I hope we don't have one... I'm not gonna beat you on the week, probably, that's...
Certainly, I got a Republican town committee, we got one, yes.
This is...
No, we, we don't...
Is that something?
No, this, this committee is, uh...
Sixteen is the...
Yeah, twenty-seven, we don't have a meeting twenty-seven.
No, but this is not a meeting on the twenty-seven, right?
No.
Yeah, that's, that's Republican town committee, hopefully I'm getting one.
That's the next one, right? The nonprofits.
Yeah.
So we're not nonprofits.
That's the big bad console.
That's what you're on?
Yeah.
No, I...
Hey, so we're gonna go with the finance department, right, here tonight, to our, this is on the agenda, this is mine, this is, we had service.
I think we already...
No, they're not helping.
No, I think we did finance service, but this is just, that's just a bucket, a...
So would I tell, would I go with the finance department?
No, we did, we did that.
I just wanna get my...
Let me just correct, Ryan, we already went through your department, right?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Oh, that's why I don't remember it, yeah, I don't remember, I don't think so, I...
Oh, we did.
I thought we did too.
The last item is this Finance Debt Service, is that Finance Department, or...
I do remember talking about the contract services, but I don't know, I don't, I don't think so. And the debt service we definitely talked about, but, um...
Definitely, definitely do you, I say, I already did, you already did your part.
I don't know, I do remember talking about it, I don't know if we actually...
February twenty-fourth.
It says Finance Debt Service, that's today.
No, I think so.
Maybe we've talked about it, but not...
Now, when you want to move, you like, all right, thanks, Jim.
All right, so let's go, uh, here's fourteen to fifteen.
All right.
Page fourteen, anything there? Page fourteen, anything there, folks? Page fifteen, compensation salary? Services, under Services, page fifteen, anything there?
It's really on the compensation.
You don't enjoy, you don't go to many conferences, do you?
I try to, if I can get the time out of the office, and, and if they're not far away, either. Like sometimes the main one, the GFPA, which is, I think, the most beneficial one to go to, um, a lot of times they're not in, like, the general area, so I don't, but if they are, I try to go. I go to the New England one, but I, the, the main GFPA one, it's like...
Mexico, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Why, you're going, no, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, with the Fairhouse, uh, where is electricity and heating in the budget for the Fairhouse?
Uh, that's all in the general government.
Okay.
Anything else on page fifteen, folks?
Don't leave, come to Brian. Don't leave the state.
Oh, man, I don't know if we're ready to go to debt service, but there's enough, the only thing I think we discussed was the land trust.
Principal landed interest.
Right.
About one seventy-four, something in that range.
Uh, so the interest, this upcoming fiscal year is gonna be, uh, seventy-nine thousand two...
Where is that, is that the one that's at the, after four, is it in four?
It's...
Section four?
Yeah, uh, no, it's on Debt Service page, so there's a separate department for Debt Service.
Seventeen, seventeen.
And the only, I mean, everything is, it's, we just pull it, and I swear now I'm having deja vu, because I thought we talked about this, but...
We have talked about it.
Yeah, okay, because, uh, the only, this comes right off the, this, uh, debt schedules, so it's not...
Comes off of what?
Like the debt schedules, when we get a bond, like a twenty-year bond, they basically, we, we already, it's already predetermined what we're gonna pay each year for principal and interest, it's like a mortgage, so it's all written in stone, it's all...
And it comes off of, what did you call it?
Debt cover?
Oh, the debt, yeah, the debt schedule.
What, from who?
From the bond, it's a, it's a section in the bond, so when we sign a bond, they, they break down the payments and the dates, so I just go through each closing document and just fill in the, the current year information.
The payments.
And so the top two are the one seventy-four, that's the new principal and interest, right, on the new one?
There, the two, it's, uh, five-five-seven-one, five-five-seven-two are the new ones.
Yeah.
The two million dollar issue, it says issue twenty nineteen, two million.
That's one seventy-four, two...
Yeah, you told us, it expires in twenty thirty-four.
Yeah, yeah, we did talk about it.
And the other two are the old ones.
Yep.
And the, and the five-five-nine-one and nine-two expire in twenty thirty-one, that's what she said.
Yep.
My notes.
So nothing's free.
Yeah, they always get voted on, all the bonds, you know.
They should be more transparent when it's on voting, you know, it's, everybody likes open space, and what you pay for, forty you pay for, between ten years, the tax rules, and then all this debt service that you have to pay, it's not cheap, it's not cheap, I just think they need to be transparent about it, and they never are.
Since we talked about education today, um, I was telling Ryan, I have a constituent named John, John...
Mark.
Mark Antonio, who says that he was a state representative, and it took his town before he moved here, and he said, I was telling him about things, and he, and he said that the, a state rep can make a change that would override the, the charter, the Charo Charter.
The Charo Act.
Charo Act.
Legislation.
Legislation can change it.
Oh, yeah, because it was legislation.
It was created by them.
Well, then why don't we lobby for that?
We have, we have...
I was gonna mention...
We know that, but we would have to get across the state, a majority across the state, who don't want to touch it because of Charleston, Charleston, of course, we don't want it, so it doesn't mean we don't do it, but, you're right, that's, that's the way...
I didn't know, I didn't know that we could do it, I thought we were told about it.
Oh, no, it was created in nineteen fifty-eight legislatively, so legislatively, you had enough support statewide, which is why you always wanna get the governor on your side.
What was created in...
Nineteen fifty-eight. So the way to, to, I mean, anybody, we can change the act, but in order to fix it, our financing issue would have to be a legislative.
I didn't know that, I thought we were just totally...
You go to court, maybe like, hey, it's a contract between the three towns, and so you don't go to court, you go to a legislative.
But you need all three towns to agree.
And the last time we brought it up to our, or we have to strike, he just laughed, and I couldn't, he just laughed at it.
Ryan Kennedy?
Yes. He's like, you gotta be kidding, but that was, that was three years ago.
But it's also, it was all three towns, you know, the only, the other way to do that is to sue Charleston.
Well, but if, if in fact you can, I, I said to, I said to Brian, I said, even if I brought that up to Ryan, to Ryan Kennedy, would that be political suicide for him?
No, you can't. The General Assembly wouldn't even entertain it unless each...
Why?
I wanna explain, explain. Uh, the General Assembly wouldn't even entertain it unless it had separate resolutions asking for it from each of the three towns.
Why does it have to be from the two or three towns?
Because it's...
Isn't it, isn't it, I'm just asking a question.
Can you?
Why, why would it have to be from all three, like, two of them asked for it?
No, it's gotta be all three, because all, because all three are affected by it.
Can I, can I respond?
Yeah, but then that says that we're, we're totally locked in, and I thought, I thought it had a, had a solution.
Or sue Charleston, Richmond, Hopkins, you get together and have to sue Charleston, yeah, there is a solution, it's just a, one that one of us can afford.
Bill, can I respond?
Yes.
This is, because I, I was at the State House years ago, and, there's a practice, which is not always on, that when they have legislation, what legislature they look for in rural town, it doesn't always work. I was up there one time, Carol Monk, that is up there, the author, you know, being involved in GOP, and she said, we have to do this, and Hopkins had objected to it, and they still did it anyways, and Hopkins objected, I believe also...
Objected to what, the original act?
Legislation, and they still did it anyways.
Well, what kind of legislation?
I can't remember, so many years.
But it wasn't, it wasn't the charter, it wasn't a three-town charter.
I'm not sure, and, but I know for a fact that when they did away with the, the Charo District Meeting, and went to a referendum, I believe Charleston did not support that, I could be wrong, I may not have to do research, but that was approved, that went out and was put on, uh, an agenda, and that was approved, I don't think the Charleston Council approved that. The, the thing with, uh, the equalized tax rate for state, General Assembly, probably would not touch that.
Why?
Because it would...
Charleston's political...
By the way, also...
And they don't care, they have nothing to do...
Dennis Eldier is assembling out of there, he represents, uh, part of Charleston also. Uh, the, so that's the political thing, minority leader strongly objected something, sure it's not gonna go anywhere. I think, the strategy I would, and I'm not a lawyer, but I believe that it's possible, I don't, and it might not work, but, we had an MDT study years ago, and it recommended an equalized tax rate, and what that report recommended is they do it, and they do it gradually, so Charleston doesn't have the complete shot, so we do have a report from outside people that recommended it, uh, whether or not a court would honor that is debatable, but, I would suggest that we would do that in that context, I would also suggest a civil rights angle, specifically, that if you took the same family, in the same type of house, and when they vote, they effectively set the tax rate of the two other towns, so, you would have a family in the same situation, same type of house, same type household income, there was the town of Charleston, that when they vote, they effectively set the tax rate of, of, and enrichment, even, even though the, the Charo vote impacts the member towns differently, it might not go anywhere legally, but I think what you do is, you have certain lawyers that deal in constitutional issues, and those are the people you talk to, and just say, if we were to sue with equalized tax rate, what would be our chances? That's all, and if, if the lawyer says forget it, you don't have a shot, then you have to take that into consideration, you at least have to ask, that's all I'm gonna say on the topic.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Do it stop.
Okay, thanks, guys. Very welcome.